Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call the meeting to order, regular city council meeting of June 22nd. And, uh, welcome to those watching at home via whatever technology you're watching with or through Rogers Cable. Uh, we'll begin with a moment, our poem from our Jenna Lynn Alber, our poet laureate, Jenna Lynn.
Thank you, your worship. Tondway McCarthy is a writer, spoken word poet, and seventh generation black Canadian. Tondway has performed his poetry during Afrofest 2019, UNB's 2020 Art Center exhibit, Rediscovering the Roots of Black New Brunswickers, and Fredericton City Council just in February. He lives here in Fredericton and has completed his degree in Recreation Management and Wellness at the University of New Brunswick this spring. Enough was composed after Tondway attended a Black Lives Matter protest here in Fredericton and heard the stories of other members of the black community here. It is a poem that addresses police violence and systemic racism, and it is intended to make us uncomfortable. It should. In June alone, two indigenous people, Chantel Moore and Rodney Levy, were killed by law enforcement during wellness checks here in our province. In the words of poet Dinesh Smith, whose poem I read at our last city council meeting, "Every poem is political." I encourage members of council and listeners at home to educate yourselves on systemic racism, microaggressions, and ways in which you can support Black Lives Matter and other initiatives that support black, indigenous, and people of color. And if the city clerk could please play Tondway's video, thank you very much.
Yo, this how you treat us? How black can they beat us? Blue knees on our necks while the whites there defeated? No love in these streets that I'm shaking and seething? My culture's been boiled, it's time for force feeding. So now all you eating, this hate you've been breeding with ignorant acts. All your egos been needing? All my life I've been pleading for whites to believe in just one simple fact, I'm a damn human being. This skin that you seeing just fills you with hate. So you take and you take until all cities break. From the dawn of history, this tune's been the same. Cause you rape and you kill while the rest getting enslaved. So this game that you play ain't gonna win, not today. Cause we done doing work for our culture that makes grand excuses for crimes and wicked news shows that just broadcast more hate. So the people can't know how to dream or to grow, how to love or to share. All the shit that you sell us just keeps us in fear. So damn your whole system, the refund is near. You can take it all back and your checks will not clear. I'm too angry to cry, I'm too sad not to scream. I'm a living nightmare to a white culture dream.
Thank you, Jenna Lynn and Tondway, that was very powerful. I just, again, will apologize for some miscommunication that happened last week. That unfortunately, this wasn't played or read last week, but it is tonight. So it's a great message. Council will be having a discussion on the entire Black Lives Matter issue and the issues that are being brought forward through an online petition. We'll be discussing this as a council in the immediate future. We haven't got the forum set up yet or how we're exactly going to do it, but it is an important issue to the community. And we will have that discussion on your behalf and the community will be part of that in whatever process we roll out. So again, thanks for bringing that forward and, uh, and proud of the fact that Jenna Lynn is a local artist poet and that Tondway is a Frederictonian as well that's bringing these forward to our attention. So appreciate that very much. Approval of agenda, city clerk?
Thank you, your worship.
You're welcome.
Uh, no additional items to the agenda, your worship?
No, okay. Uh, be moved by councillor Malay, seconded by councillor Grandy, that the agenda be adopted. All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. Does anybody have a conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda? If so, please advise. I do. Yeah, thank you. I will, I have, I will be declaring a conflict of interest on item 7.3. Consent agenda. Be moved by councillor Rogers, seconded by councillor Chase, that we adopt the consent agenda. I know there's an item 5.3 that councillor Grandy would like to speak to. That is the public presentation, public hearing dates, municipal plan, city center's secondary plan, and zoning bylaw, housekeeping. Councillor Grandy.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Uh, I, look, when, uh, when I read this, um, it's not going to make much sense. Something that's going to the planning advisory committee and making its way back to council with some dates on it. Um, but basically it talks about housekeeping. Yes, there's a bit of housekeeping there, but there are some other details that, uh, I think people need to know or should be made public. And I understand in discussions with Ken Forrest, that now CIC next week, uh, he'll be bringing a full presentation on not only the housekeeping issues, but, uh, the other areas that he wants to ensure that we understand and that the public understands. So that when it goes to PRC, they'll have a, uh, an ability to comment then. They'll also have an ability to comment first and second reading and then later in August when we get to our final reading. So I just want to make the public aware that maybe they can tune into CIC next week uh, to find out what those details are, and they will be made public through the PAC process as well. Um, just trying to make sure everybody understands. And this is all about our new municipal plan, uh, and the bylaws that go along with that. The Imagine Fredericton Plan and be good if people would, uh, follow up, uh, look at those and then make comments to us. Thank you, worship.
Thank you councillor, anybody have any other items they'd like to speak to? No, if that's the case, uh, please cast your vote. Or sorry, most are here in public, sorry. I'm having a hard time getting back the fact that we're here in public as opposed to on Zoom. All those in favor of the motion? All those against? Motion is carried. Move on to item. Oops, item six, presentations. We have 25 year service awards. We haven't had those for a little while and these is one of the most pleasurable things that we able to do. And, um, the first is Jennifer Goodine. And where is Jennifer on here? Somebody's got to bring Jennifer up on screen here for me. Oh, she might not be able, okay, well then, I'm just going to assume that you're watching Jennifer. I know you're out there invited, don't see your smiling face. And it is my pleasure to present Jennifer Goodine with her 25 year service award virtually. Jennifer is a graduate of the Atlantic Business College. She joined the city working in the city clerk's office on a term position. After her term ended, Jennifer worked in the private sector for a short time before returning to the city in 1994 to work full time in the clerk's office. In 1998, then CAO Paul Stapleton asked Jennifer if she would be interested in moving to the office of the mayor and CAO. It is with, it is interesting to note that that time there were two admin assistants in that office and it is now just Jennifer who manages the offices of the CAO and the mayor. Since in her career, Jennifer, Jennifer has made a significant contribution to this organization. Her eagerness to learn and take charge of anything asked of her shows what type of individual she is. Her willingness, energy, and organizational abilities have earned her much respect among her coworkers and throughout the municipal world as well. As council well knows, it is not unusual to emails from Jennifer at all hours of the day and night, seven days a week. She never stops working. What many people do also do not know about Jennifer is that she has another responsibility. For the past 15 years, she has been Executive Director of the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators. This is a national organization, organization of city managers and CAOs. KAMA, as it's known, has almost 700 members across the country, representing 85 of the Canadian, 85% of the Canadian population. The city of Fredericton has been a strong supporter of KAMA and three of its past presidents were CAOs in Fredericton. John Robinson, Paul Stapleton, and Chris McPherson. Jennifer has been recognized nationally for her effort in improving local governance, receiving the Queen's Diamond Jubilee Medal in 2012. If I had to describe Jennifer to anyone, I would say she is pleasant, dedicated staff person who has a work ethic like no other. She really does hold the office of Chris and I together. She also cares deeply about the city, the staff, and of course, us as elected officials. When she isn't working, which isn't often, she is dedicated to fitness and with daily weight training and yoga. And Jennifer, um, it's hard to describe your contribution to, uh, to the office of Chris and myself and the council and to the city in, uh, in those short words. Um, you're a spectacular person. The calls that you take from the public, always cordial, always helpful. And, um, it's, uh, it's just amazing the amount of steering of issues that you can, uh, can do. You, uh, you direct people to the right, to the right staff, uh, people lots of times before something gets to my desk. You've already had it researched and have some background information for me and Chris. So look, uh, it's, it's just an absolute pleasure to come to work every day and work with you. I know Chris feels exactly the same, uh, council does as well. So Jennifer, 25 years, it's been a fantastic time in the last four years as me as mayor and my almost 19 plus years on council to be able to deal with you and have you there, have our back all the time. So Jen, 25 years, great time, and I wish you were here, but let me see if I can, uh, virtually somehow, there it is. This is for you Jen, and we're going to make sure you get that, thank you. Now, we have Bonnie Curtis. Now Bonnie, come up to the podium at least, yes, there we are. Are we, are we able to get her on camera there? Is Rogers able to get Bonnie on camera? Hmm?
Um, you'll have to ask Adam.
Well, okay, well anyways, Bonnie, welcome. Bonnie started with the city in May 17, 1995. That ended up being a very good hiring decision. Bonnie has always been a hard worker, raising her four children as a single mom, then bringing that strong work ethic to her job as a parking employee. Bonnie is devoted to her family, from caring for her aging mother to spending time with her many grandchildren who number in the double digits. Earlier, earlier in her career, she worked all the different shifts and most of the parking locations, including parking meter enforcement. Parking work is very strenuous, especially in the winter, though no matter what the weather is, she always works with a smile and without complaint. Bonnie is very easy to train and quick to adapt to technology changes and has passed along parking work techniques to her many trainees over the years. Because York Street Car Park has so many visitors requiring a special customer service touch, Bonnie was permanently assigned to this lot in 2008. Bonnie is so much more than a parking enforcement officer. She is a welcome, welcomeer, greeter, and one of the city's best ambassadors. She has great attention to detail, remembering people and their vehicles. Seeing her in action, you'd be amazed to know that she knows about every person and every car in the lot. She makes people feel like they have been well, uh, taken care of. From time to time, she's been known to tease our city hall staff and councillors and look after us like we're her extended family. Outside of work, Bonnie can often be found at the Playhouse where she enjoys taking in the many shows while enjoying her love of music and socializing with friends. Bonnie's pride in her job and the city is displayed daily. She is truly appreciated as a city of Fredericton staff member, and we wish her congratulations on her 25 years of service. Bonnie, you are, um, perhaps as said in those words, one of the biggest ambassadors a city of Fredericton has. Any newcomer to the city cannot get out of that parking lot without finding out what's going on in the city, where is, where's the best spots to eat and reminding them about their parking time. So, uh, it's amazing to see you out there always with a smile and it's so appreciated by staff, is so appreciated by council, and is appreciated by the people of Fredericton. You do a phenomenal job, thanks Bonnie. There she is right there. And keep smiling and I know you will. Now we'll move on to item, uh, 7.1, uh, bylaw Z9.1 and Z5193, which is 707-737 Beaverbrook Street. And it's a secondary, uh, College Hill Secondary Plan Amendment and Chair Development. You take that one councillor Grandy.
Keep forgetting, probably someone's used to turn the mics on and they gotta try to hit it yourself now. Um, that's great, thank you very much. Um, be resolved that the report of the Planning Advisory Committee dated June 20th, 2019 with respect to an application from Bella Properties to amend the College Hill Secondary Municipal Plan to exclude 707-737 Beaverbrook Street from the College Hill Planning Area Policy Area C and to rezone from MR2 to MR5 to allow construction of a 48 unit apartment building be received. And be it further resolved that the legal division be directed to prepare an appropriate stop-up and close bylaw for PID 75511477 as shown on map to attach to the planning report 30 slash 20 in order that this portion of Beaverbrook Street right of way be closed and conveyed to the developer for consolidation with Pids 75015891014550960145508801455070.
Be seconded by councillor McGarrett on the question. All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. Uh, city clerk, hearing of objections and support.
Thank you, worship. The office of the city clerk has not received any letters of objection or support.
Thank you councillor Grandy, first reading.
Thank you, worship. Be resolved that the bylaw number Z dash 9.1, a bylaw to amend by law number Z dash 9, a College Hill Secondary Municipal Plan for the city of Fredericton be given first reading by title.
Seconded by councillor McGarrett on the question. All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. Carry on.
Be resolved that the bylaw number Z dash 9.1, a bylaw to amend by law number Z dash 9, a College Hill Secondary Municipal Plan for the city of Fredericton be given second reading by title.
Seconded by councillor McGarrett on the question. All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. Carry on.
Be resolved that by the bylaw number Z dash 5.193, a bylaw to amend by law number Z dash 5, a zoning bylaw for the city of Fredericton be given first reading by title.
Seconded by councillor Grandy, or sorry, McGarrett. On the question? All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. Carry on.
Be resolved that bylaw number Z dash 5.193, a bylaw to amend by law number Z dash 5, a zoning bylaw for the city of Fredericton be given a second reading by title.
Seconded by councillor McGarrett on the question. All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. 7.2, bylaw Z5194, 485 Canada Street zoning amendment, deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Be resolved that a report of the Planning Advisory Committee dated June 18th, 2020 with respect to an application from E&amp;E Powerline Limited to amend residential zone to where a permitted contractor shop at 45 Canada Street be received.
Seconded by councillor Price. On the question? All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. Um, city clerk, hearing of objections and support.
Thank you, worship. The office of the city clerk has not received any letters of objection or support.
Thank you. Um, first reading, carry on deputy mayor.
Be resolved that bylaw number Z5.194, a bylaw to amend by law number Z5, a zoning bylaw for the city of Fredericton be given first reading by title.
Seconded by councillor Price on the question. I've been advised to go a little bit slower just in case somebody is in on Zoom, wants to put their hand up. No questions, all those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. Carry on.
Be resolved that bylaw number Z5.194, a bylaw to amend by law number Z5, a zoning bylaw for the city of Fredericton be given second reading by title.
Seconded by councillor Price on the question. All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion's carried. 7.3, bylaw Z5195199 Queen Street. I will be declaring a conflict on that. Deputy mayor, you take the chair please on that.
Thank you, worship. Um, councillor Rogers?
Hey deputy mayor. Be resolved that the report of the Planning Advisory Committee dated June 18th, 2020 with respect to an application from Carl Smythe, architect, to amend the city's center CC zone to increase the allowable building height from 28.2 meters to 31.2 meters to allow construction of a 63 unit mixed-use building at 199 Queen Street be received. And be it further resolved that bylaw number Z5.169 and associated terms and conditions adopted by city council on June 10th, 2019 be repealed.
Thank you councillor Rogers, seconded by councillor Malay. On the question? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Hearing of objections and support, city clerk.
Thank you, deputy worship. The office of the city clerk has not received any letters of objection or support.
Thank you, city clerk. Councillor Rogers?
Be resolved that bylaw number Z5.195, a bylaw to amend by law number Z5, a zoning bylaw for the city of Fredericton be given first reading by title.
Seconded by councillor Malay on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry on councillor Rogers.
Be it resolved that bylaw number Z5.195, a bylaw to amend by law number Z5, a zoning bylaw for the city of Fredericton be given second reading by title.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Malay on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we'll wait for his worship to return for third reading of bylaws.
Deputy mayor, right behind you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on, um, we're seeing these applications come through. And I think during these times, um, a lot of cities and a lot of areas are suffering from trying to get their economies back up. But what this shows is that there's still, uh, a pickup in the confidence in the city of Fredericton. There's a lot of units being constructed. There's a lot of permits in right now and, uh, so I want to, uh, recognize the development community for stepping forward during this really hard time and understanding that we're still way behind on vacancy rate and number of units. So, um, it's great to see them stepping up and going forward. So I just wanted to make that mention, thank you deputy mayor.
Thank you councillor Grandy, good points. And I know the housing market's very strong in the city right now, houses are going very quickly. Your worship?
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, deputy mayor. I just wanted to ask a question and neither, and perhaps it's my oversight, but in the first and second readings, none of them stated a third reading date. Would we not typically see that in the resolutions?
City clerk?
Sorry, the question you were looking for, third meet, the, the date of the third reading? I don't think we normally have a third, the date of the third reading in the motion now.
That would typically be for public presentations of bylaws, who have the date, but.
Yeah, if we do a public presentation, it'll indicate the date, but doesn't in the, in the motion.
So that's, okay, thank you. I was looking for it for one of them for the, for the 7.1. Where it was, uh, that, um.
Okay.
I just bear it was a municipal plan, the secondary municipal plan. I would have just expected that there to have been a date, but that's okay.
Okay. So move on to item 8.1, bylaw L11169, stop up and close a portion of Dunn's Crossing Road. Councillor Erickson.
Thank you, worship. Um, be resolved that bylaw number L dash 11.169, a bylaw to stop up and close a portion of Dunn's Crossing Road be read by summary pursuant to section 15, sub 3 of the Local Governance Act.
Be seconded by councillor Peters on the question. Get my screen up here so I can see if there are any. Be none? All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. Carry on.
Whereas municipalities may make bylaws pursuant to the Local Governance Act now, therefore be enacted by the council of the city of Fredericton in pursuit to the authority vested in it by the Local Governance Act, SNB 2017, Chapter 18, as follows. Purpose of the proposed bylaw number L dash 11.169 is to stop up and close a portion of Dunn's Crossing Road and be it resolved that bylaw number L dash 11.169, a bylaw to stop up and close a portion of Dunn's Crossing Road be given third reading by title.
Seconded by councillor Peters on the question. Be none? Uh, all those in favor? Against? Motion is carried.
Worship? Yes. I wonder if we go back to 7.1 for councillor Rogers. Um, she has a point, maybe Marcello or Ken can come into this. Um, that is a change in municipal plan, uh, well, at least the College Hill Municipal, uh, Secondary Plan. And usually there is a date and some majority of them, maybe they can explain the process and what's happened here just for councillor Rogers' benefit. I think it's worth it.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that was, I raised the question because it was the, um, for the secondary plan, just.
Certainly. Is Ken or Marcello, uh, Ken Forrest, are you online?
I am, your worship. Uh, essentially what happens in the case of a secondary plan amendment as well as a rezoning is that, uh, the processes are now running concurrently. The municipal plan process starts first, the municipal plan process then follows a few weeks later. They're now running concurrently. So you gave first and second reading this evening and then you would give third reading at the next meeting of city council on both sets of amendments, the amendments to the secondary plan as well as the zoning.
Is that, is that an answer?
I guess I'm just, um, it is, it is an answer. I was just, so what, I guess maybe this is the question. When we see dates of third reading, I'm thinking of for the public in general, when we see the dates, um, for third reading, how does, how is that distinct from what we would have expected to see tonight?
Ken?
Uh, your worship, I'm, I'm not, I'm not clear what's being referred to in terms of dates for third reading. Uh, I, I concur with the city clerk that I, I don't believe that's something that council normally sees. Uh, we set the public hearing date early on in the process and that's what happened this evening. Third reading is then council's opportunity to have a discussion and make a final decision on the application. And that, that almost always happens at the, uh, the immediate next meeting of city council. But I don't, I don't recall that that, uh, date is present in any of the, uh, in any of the, uh, you know, anything that goes out in writing during the process.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's still a little bit of, uh, lack of clarity, maybe it's just our understanding. So I'll, I'll ask maybe, uh, Ken, if you could follow up with, uh, councillor Rogers maybe tomorrow and just, uh, we're just missing something in the translation here, that's all.
Thank you, thank you worship.
Okay. Uh, we move on to other matters. Uh, 9.1, Fredericton Recreation Summer Programs and Facilities. And we have a presentation and PowerPoint presentation by Michelle Horncastle, the manager of Recreation, Culture, and Community Development. And Michelle, the, uh, I was going to say the floor is yours, the screen is yours.
Good evening, uh, your worship, members of council, thank you very much. Um, this evening I'd like to provide you with a brief update on the current status of recreational facilities and our summer programs. Aquatics wise, uh, since reopening on June 8th, uh, the Fredericton Indoor Pool has continued to see an increase in attendance and that would be at all our swim times. Uh, and yesterday, our facility ambassadors and lifeguard supervision began at the Clarny Lake Beach and the four outdoor pools. As noted last week, uh, the Dirt Jump Bike Skills Park, disc golf courses, our dog parks, skate parks, uh, pickleball and tennis courts and our outdoor fitness equipment are all open and are being well used by members of the public. Uh, next slide please, Adam. Thank you. Uh, playground wise, uh, since our last update, all city playgrounds are now open to the public and as well, all Anglophone West School District playgrounds are open as well. Uh, so this is something that we did not anticipating, uh, last week and I'm sure that members of the community will really be pleased that they can go out and use the playground structures. Um, all of our ball fields, sport fields, artificial turf fields and beach volleyball courts are now available for scheduled use. And that was as of last Monday on June 15th. And, uh, just as a reminder, a return to play operational plan is required and they have started to come in from our ice user groups. And that is in anticipation of the opening of our first sheet of ice at the Grant Harvey Center, which is upcoming on July 13th. So now that we have reopened much of our recreational infrastructure, over the course of the past couple of weeks, our staff have refocused their efforts and, uh, we can now provide a little bit more time to, to look at developing programs for children and youth within our parks and our open spaces in our facilities this summer. And to this end, um, we will, uh, be opening the Northside Youth Center this. the Northside Youth Center this summer on June 29. That will be next Monday morning. And we'll be very pleased to offer 10-week-long day camps. And this year, we'll provide the option of having a full-day day camp or a half-day day camp. And individuals will register via Amelia software by going to our website, Fredericton.ca. And it is about maybe a five-minute process to register, and we've had some very positive feedback on registration process online. The ever-popular drop-in portion of Northside Youth Center will also be operational this year, and that will be starting at 1 o'clock in the afternoon and going on into the evenings for the course of the summer period. We will have the girls-only lessons, which are very popular, and the elementary-level afternoon skates, best trick night, and open-bike events will also be offered this year. Moving on to the summer zigzag playground program, we will be able to offer this really popular program in 18 neighborhood community locations this summer, starting on July 6, and will continue on for seven weeks. And this year, we'll be offering a morning zigzag program from 8:30 till noon, and then a second program from 1 o'clock in the afternoon until 4:30 PM. And this actually, as with the aquatic facilities, will be a little bit different in the registration process this year. Parents will be asked to register their child online versus onsite at the playground. So, and also, they'll be able to participate in either the morning or the afternoon session in groups of 15, but we'll ask that they choose either one or the other for the duration of that week. For the final two weeks of the summer, that would be from August 24 to September 4, we'll be offering nature day camps, and that is in response to individuals suggesting this over the last several years. And that would be for children aged 6 to 12 years of age at Odell Lodge and the Clarnie Lake Rotary Centennial Lodge. These will be full-day day camps that will start at 8:30 in the morning and continue on until 4:30 in the afternoon. And the focus will be upon interacting with the wilderness environment, discovering the many plants and animals that inhabit the ecosystem, and taking part in related games and activities within an old-growth forest environment. So to conclude, I would encourage everyone to take a few moments to visit one of our many beautiful parks, trails, or pools this summer. Stop by a neighborhood tennis court or a dog park or register for one of our recreational programs. We really do believe that there is something for everyone out there this summer, and we look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, and your entire team. And I have a question from Councilor Malley.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Michelle. First of all, I think this is great. And all the youth, the kids in the city were highly affected by COVID, and we're starting slowly, not getting back to normal, but at least creating some activities for them. I think it would have been easy for staff to say that day camp this year would have been impossible to run, but I think we found ways and found solutions so we can continue to offer great service to our youth. Question for Michelle, maybe Dave, I believe is online. With the new rules put out by the province on Friday, just wondering, would that affect some of the decisions we made in the past regarding some of the facilities that we decided not to open?
Yeah, I'll take that one, Your Worship. We're still reviewing the province's clarificate, or the province's new orders as of Friday. We're actually seeking some clarification on detail on what they, how they would be applied. And, and so it's a little early, I think, for us to be able to say what impact they may have. There might be a few small decisions that we made, for instance, whether or not we allow more than one guardian at the ice rinks at any one time. That might change, not immediately, but that could change. But I think there probably aren't many decisions we've made that would change as a result of yesterday or Friday's order. There's a couple that we might review, but many of the decisions we've made have financial outcomes. We've transferred money to other areas, so those, we're probably not going to step back from most of the decisions we've made.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Michelle? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Quite impressive what staff has done to get us to this point. I agree with Ari 100%. And I think a lot of times, we take for granted what we have here in the city, because this stuff happens so seamlessly every year. But the fact that we've had to revamp all these programs, you get a good look at everything we actually provide in the city. There's recreational programs and services, and it's really impressive. So kudos to all our staff with that. I did have a question probably for Dave or Ken. I was at Clarnie Lake over the weekend, absolutely packed, Friday, Saturday were there, Friday night at the 8 o'clock, and I had to wait for a parking spot. So, and everyone was doing the rest of staying in their bubbles. It was, it was pretty impressive. I was just wondering about the food trucks. Any update on when that may take place? Because like I said, there were hundreds of people there, and they would be well utilized, especially with Mac to Quack closed.
There would be Dave.
Yes, thank you, Worship. We're just waiting for new electrical supply to be installed at Clarnie Lake so that we can accommodate the food trucks. We expect that'll be done this week, and we hope they'll be available next week or even as early as Sunday.
Okay. Any other questions? No. So again, thanks, thanks, Michelle, and to echo the comments of the couple of councillors and Deputy Mayor, it's tremendous work. And I want to really thank the residents for their patience, too. I mean, I know it's trying times for everybody, and it's unprecedented times, but rest assured that our staff have been working double time to try to figure out how to open as many facilities in as normal a capacity as they possibly can. And so it's, again, the patience. I've had quite a few calls and emails from people just questioning why, and once you had the chance to explain, people do understand. But again, thanks to the public, and our staff is there to serve you, and they're doing their absolute best. So good work, team. I guess we, that would be the last item. So a motion to exclude Councillors Dara and Keenan, that be moved by Councilor McGarrett, seconded by Councilor Malley. All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. And a motion to adjourn, that would be our combination of Peters and Price. All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.